Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the September 11th School Committee Meeting. At this time, I will call to order and ask everyone to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next introduction of members, I'll start on the left.
Jane Reggio, Millville.
Carrie Goddett, Blackstone.
Erin Finaco, Millville.
Matt Catalano, Millville.
Chuck Dunton, Blackstone.
Tara Scobie, Blackstone.
Dan Keith, Blackstone.
Maya Gagne, Student Council President.
Julia Kurensik, Student Council Treasurer.
Kristin DiNato, Director of Finance and Operations.
Joseph Spagna, Director of Finance and Operations, outgoing.
And Jill Pillagallaroni, Interim Superintendent.
Welcome, everyone, and next up is a report from our student representatives.
So BMR is preparing for homecoming season. We are going to be doing a tropical homecoming theme. It is going to be September 25th, 6:00 to 9:00 p.m., under sea wing and outside. And we've got 400 lays, we've got all the decorations ready, and we are selling tickets at lunch leading up to that date. We also have homecoming games on the 26th and the 27th for all of our fall sports. Speaking of which, they're now in full swing. Football has their first game this week coming up, and we also have new sport, I mean, new sports coaches in both volleyball and field hockey, whose seasons have also been coming off to a great start, with field hockey having a win just last week. Our marching band is also preparing to start the fall season, and some of our fall sports captains from field hockey, volleyball, cheer, and soccer attended the Central Massachusetts Athletic Leadership Sports Conference at Blackstone Valley Tech and Nittmuck Regional High School just two days ago.
Yes, also, marching band is coming to a start, too. Their first show is this Saturday, and I'm pretty sure their home show is next Saturday. We have a few changes to the schedule this year for the high school. We have grabbing go breakfast instead of actually sitting down and eating it, and our charter time was changed to extended time, so we just have extended time to our second period.
And also, this year, we have a unique situation where Julia is on the Regional Student Council Board for CDMASC, and I'm on the State Student Council Board for Massachusetts, and we were going to share a little bit about what's going on in the state and the region. So for the state, the theme we decided on, which I'm very grateful to say that I came up with, is Greece, and we're going to go into the trials and tribulations of the Greek gods and goddesses, and how that relates to leadership, perseverance, and relating it to your own life and your own journey through high school and pushing through adversity. And the first event for the state will be President's Dinner, which unfortunately does make me have to miss homecoming, which is on the 25th of September. And our next event will be in October, which is Officer Shop.
Yes, now, for the Central District, our theme is camping, and our like motto is eat, sleep, and lead. And with the camping theme, we're really just doing like an outdoorsy theme with like green, blue colors. Our first conference is in the fall, it's going to be in November, and then we also have a spring conference in April.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for our representatives? Looks like everything is in full swing again, and it was a great presentation by both of yous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, consentor and agenda, I'll take a motion to approve the warrants. Motion by Carrie, seconded by Jane. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Approved minutes of August 21st, 2025. Motion made by Carrie. Seconded by Tara. There's one Tara here this evening, so Tara has. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Oh, abstain.
I abstain.
I wasn't.
Okay, so we have.
Two abstentions.
Two abstentions, five VAs. Seven of us here? Okay. Next is public forum, anybody wishing to address the school committee? Seeing none, we'll move on to school committee portion of the agenda with starting off with Millville Elementary Water Update. We have representatives from the Millville Board of Selectment, thank you for coming tonight, we have the chairman and vice chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
So Jennifer, Vice Chair and Water Liaison, I guess, for.
What is our?
Yeah.
What is our?
Richard Remmelst, Chair.
So we have a few updates. So the installation of the equipment is complete, and there'll be an engineering review of the installation by September 19th, and that's McClure Engineering. They'll go in and make sure that it looks like the diagram that was approved by Mass D E P. Between September 26th and 30th, the well itself will be cleaned, so the pump will be removed, they'll be cleaning the pipe that goes down and doing a few other things to try to limit the total organic carbons that get into the water at that point. After this, Mass D E P will inspect the entirety of the system, but that schedule is by Mass D E P availability, so it's as soon as they can do it, but that might take a week or two to schedule and maybe longer. Once all of that is done, then the new technology will be turned on, and the testing protocols are still being determined between Mass D E P and McClure Engineering, because with the cleaning of the well and then ramping it back up and then turning it off and turning it on, they have, there'll be different intervals for testing initially, and then they'll be testing ongoing after that initial turn-on period, which I don't know how long that is, but as discussed previously, there will be a rigorous testing plan because it's a one-year pilot study.
And that's it?
Well, excellent. Thank you. Any questions for the Millville Selectment? Well, thank you.
Thank you.
And moving forward, if you want, we'd love to have you here, but if you wanted to send.
We'll let you know when we have like kind of bigger news, like maybe first round of test results on the new tech or something like that, but in the meantime, like Richard and I can email you, Mr. Chairman and Jill, and be like, hey, we just have these like small updates, but we have like big test results or something will come in, good or bad. Hopefully, they'll be good.
Yes.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, sure.
Thank you for your effort on this. Thank you very much. This Madam Superintendent, I would imagine you'll be giving the MSBA update this evening.
Sure will. So just an update, if you recall, I believe I mentioned in the last School Committee meeting that our preliminary design program, which is our PSR, was submitted on August 28th. We did get some feedback and some comments, and we did respond. If you all recall that the School Building Committee did go forward with the preferred design of a 7 through 12 new building. The next on the agenda is our PSR is going to go to the Facilities Assessment Committee, and that's going to be moving forward on October 1st. From there, after we answer any questions they may have, once that's approved, it'll move on to the MSBA, and that meeting is on October 29th. Once that is approved, we can actually enter into the next phase of this project, which is schematic design phase with a submission date, a target date for submission in February.
I think that's a lot of things. That's pretty. Great. No question? Sure.
Follow-up? Thank you very much. Next up, we have to approve the 2025 through 2028 Unit A contract.
Yep, if you look in your packets, the Unit A did ratify the contract that was negotiated, so that is in there. I know you had a chance to look at that, so what can we be looking for? Committee had any questions, but looking for approval for the committee to move forward and approve.
Through a long discussions, dialogue, a lot of meetings, we finally made it to the end of the road on this, to this point anyhow. If anyone else has any questions or concerns, comments, hearing none, I'll take a motion to approve the contract for Unit A.
So moved.
Motion made by Jane.
Second.
Seconded by Tara. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? Any opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. And finally, on this school committee portion, is the appointment of interim superintendent to BIKO Board of Directors.
Right, so every year, the superintendent or the interim superintendent needs to be voted onto the Board of Directors for our BIKO Board, so I will become a voting member when I attend those meetings.
So you need a motion?
Yeah.
Okay, so I move to make Jill on the BIKO Board.
Board of Directors.
Board of Directors.
Motion made by Tara.
Second.
Seconded by Chuck. I ask this every year, because it seems like every year, any major increases with them?
Well, nothing new. Yes, there was increases last year for their tuition. There was also a slight increase for, they do rent space for districts around, so they're continuing to rent space with us, and there was a slight increase to that as well, but it does seem to be going up every year.
Yes. Okay. Just have to ask every year.
Yes. There will be maybe a year that I could say no increase, it was a decrease, but it did not happen this year.
Alrighty. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to the report of the superintendent.
So I know Kristin did introduce herself, but we're happy to have Kristin on board with Joe. This will be his last School Committee meeting with us, his last day is tomorrow. Kristin joined us on Monday, and as I think I mentioned earlier, some members, she came on Monday and she's still here, which is a good thing, so she stayed.
She's not got scared away.
She's been spending all week with Joe, and she's still here, so we're really happy to have her on board and, you know, become a member of our team. Kristin, if you want to.
Thank you. I'm honored and excited to be part of the team here. I would be remiss if I didn't thank Joe for all that he's done. He has left this district in amazing shape, and it's going to be very big shoes to fill, so I will, I will do my best, but I'm looking forward to working with, with the team here, and, and that's, that's kind of it. Thank you for the appointment.
And we have had an opportunity, just so you're all aware, to meet with both Colliers to catch her up to date on the work that we've been doing with the School Building Committee, so that meeting has taken place, so we're already on getting that.
Butters of like PDP, PSR, FAA. Makes sense, right?
Yeah. I'm getting there. I will. We'll have to get rid of a little cheat sheet. Yes. Perfect. Welcome, Kristin.
Thank you.
Next is our I Ready. So if you look in your file, I just gave you a little sheet just to give you some information. Remember, we made a decision to move forward with I Ready, so we used to use STAR for our assessments for math and literacy, and we brought I Ready on board, which Mary's going to talk a little bit about, because it did bring some enhanced features to the program that's been very helpful for intervention. So Mary?
So hello. The rollout for I Ready has been really smooth. I mean, you know, we had a few hiccups, but it's been pretty good, and the teachers seem to really appreciate the depth, it's much more in-depth than, than STAR was, so they're, they're really looking at the questions, and it does take a little bit longer than, than STAR, but the way that we knew this already, and they can do this one in increments, so they can stop the test and take some of it one day and then take it, take it the rest, so that's, that's. Yeah, and it's really helpful for the little ones, so for, for the kindergartners, they can take a few days to do it, so. Our new coach has been helping over, over at MES, too, with, with that, so it's been good. I don't have the.
I think Tim changed.
Okay. So we had, we, this, this program came with three professional developments for the teachers, so we had our first professional development in August with new, with the teacher orientation, and so we didn't use all of it up, so we actually have another hour, which I think is, is good, because now they've used it a little bit, so they have some questions to see before they give it a second time. And we also have another, an additional PD for the, for the principals, the coaches, myself and Jill, and we're going to have some of the I L T members come to that one as well, so that they can report back to the teachers. And, and then in November, when we have our first professional day, we'll have another live PD for all of the teachers again, and this time, they'll have their own, their own results, their own test results, so they'll be able to look at, they've already looked at the results anyway, but really how to analyze the data a little bit more and also use, because this, this program came with a lot of resources, and so how to use those resources to the best of their ability, and, and then, you know, just to, to drive the targeted instruction. And we also will have another PD with, with I Ready in the spring as well, so I have to say, they've been really supportive. You can, you, we have our, a person that I can, when I email, she emails us back and calls us, they're, they're really, it's a good company to work with so far.
And Mary, the, I know they're having a PD November, but that doesn't mean we're not already continuing to move forward. We have the initial results of students.
Yeah, they're already working on the data, but this will just show them ways on how to use all the resources that, that they'll have, and just use the data a little bit more in depth, so.
And the big thing I think staff really enjoys.
I was just going to ask if they are giving feedback.
Yes, I think we have. The only thing we got, not negative, but it does take a little bit longer.
Yeah, it takes longer.
It's because the results are more in-depth. They're really looking into those skills, but the resources, I think, is the primary, like they really, there's someplace else to go. It's not like you're trying to find them, it's like, here are the skills, you can go right into I Ready and find those resources to start working with the kids right away.
Both families also still be getting, I know STAR reports used to go home. This still has a.
Yeah, you'll get, yeah, definitely. Any other questions?
And we hope to be able to present, and we'll set that time, but usually, it's the end of October when we present some of our data, the MCAS will be able to talk a little bit about I Ready as well.
The, most of the schools are done, are like, they're almost done. The high schools, starting English, the reading one next week.
With the beginning of the year assessment.
Yes, the beginning of the year.
When you give some results in October, can, can we add in some feedback from the staff?
Sure.
Absolutely.
And like I said, it's been great, because they have been giving us feedback. They've been involved, and so far, I think the only, I wouldn't even call it a negative, the difference is.
The time.
That it takes a little bit longer, but the good thing is you can pause.
Right. And we've, and we've thought, we've already, like, I've already been talking to some of the teachers on maybe some different ways on doing the testing, so. It's, it'll be a trial year, like, to see, but so far, so good.
When you're saying like the time is longer, is it still like math is separate from literacy or are they all?
There's more questions for each, so it's.
So they say, I know like, or was, like, math was one day, then the LA was another day, still like that?
Yeah, but they're doing like one week, one week, so, but there's like 90 questions, so it's a little bit more in-depth.
Does it keep going?
Even for the little ones?
No, 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 there's a shorter.
Dang.
There's a shorter, there's a shorter.
Was it STAR that used to keep going, like, if they got it right, and then it adjusted to that?
Yeah.
Does this also, do you like, keep going, like, it's already that much longer? Will they?
Yes. Yep, you'll still get the same amount, yeah. So it's a diagnostic, so it will, it will do that.
And I know our kindergarten will be starting soon, too.
Yes.
We wanted to give them a little bit of extra time to go into school.
To tie their shoes.
Exactly, before.
Yeah, they haven't started.
Right. And the only assessment that, of course, I Ready doesn't go down to our preschool, but as I think I presented, we have, two years ago, we have what's called MY IgDs for our preschool, that they do twice a year, just so we can get a sense on those early literacy and numeracy skills, and that will continue, but that won't go, we have that a little bit further on it.
Yeah, that'll be in, not like another month, yeah.
Excellent.
Anything else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary. You're welcome. The next, yep, the next thing in your folder, we, just, just for your information, we have Dr. Molly Kane from Tri River, who joined our team last year, when Dr. Perriello, after many, many, many years in the district, you know, retired from us, so we'll be looking to renew her contract, this is for information only, I didn't know if anyone had any other questions, but same, similar, very similar contract as the last year. The next thing I wanted to bring to the committee's attention was National Junior Honor Society. So we currently, in the past, we had National Junior Honor Society that students applied at the end of 7th grade, and it went into their 8th grade year. So after discussion with the principals, what we would like to propose, and Joe and I have already gone over the financials for this, there is, and Jess was very helpful in looking into this a little bit more, what we'd like to propose is to have two chapters of National Junior Honor Society. Number one, it's going to include more students, but what it would do is you would start in the 6th grade, after you, I think it's the second semester, you would be able to apply, you could start in the 6th grade, and it would go through 7th grade, so it would be in this building, that would be one chapter. The second chapter would be in 8th grade, it would last 8th and 9th grade, and then if you wanted to apply to high school honor society, which normally starts in 10th grade, it would start there and move forward. Would just give our students more opportunity, rather than just waiting until the end of 7th grade, they're on National Junior Honor Society for one year. It would mean two separate chapters, but it would give this building as middle school an opportunity to introduce the students to the program, and then it would continue on it with the second chapter at the high school, and that would not impact our high school National Honor Society at all, which will continue for the 10 through 12. So we'd like to have, we already have the stipend, but we'd like to do two separate stipends to be able to kind of expand the program and give more opportunities.
Jane.
So, so a student who is selected in the second semester of their 6th grade year, provided they don't break the rules, stays in the 7th grade, do they have to reapply 8th and 9th, since it's a new chapter?
They, they, it's a new chapter, so they're may, we can get into all the details, but it would give them an opportunity, and it could be that they're just going to maintain what they're doing.
Yeah.
But we, it still is two, they're still requiring two chapters because they're in two separate schools.
That's common.
I think, I'm struggling with, does that take away from the earning it at the end of 7th grade and making it like a, an achievement at that point? Like, not so much taking away from an achievement, but, I don't know, I feel like it's too early, that we were giving them something to work through all those years to earn it at the end of 7th?
Well, the, the middle school, when this was requested, the middle school felt that the kids were working up to 7th grade, right? And remember, prior to that, 8th grade was at our middle school, so the kids were leaving the middle school and heading into, for one year, Honor Society. They would be in it one year only, there would be nothing in 9th grade, and they'd reapply in 10th grade.
Don't they have it for 8th and 9th together now at the high school?
No.
Yeah.
It's 8th grade.
No, 8th and 9th is part of the NJHS at the high school.
I don't know.
Because the officers are going to be 9th graders.
So our right now for our National Junior Honor Society is 7th into 8th.
That's what it was when it was in this building. I was going to ask, did it change last year and include 9th grade already?
They're saying that, I don't think officially.
We inducted.
7th grade is into 8th.
Current 8th and 9th graders.
9th graders?
The current NJHS is made up of 8th and 9th graders.
Yeah, it's supposed to be 7th into 8th.
They're inducted at the end of 7th.
For one year.
And then.
When it was in this building.
Right, but currently, with the 8th grade at the high school, the National Junior Honor Society is made up of 8th and 9th graders. So you're saying 8th graders last year were inducted, who are now freshmen? Yes.
So our chapter, the chapter that we're associated with, is 7th into 8th, so.
One year.
Because of the building change, basically, because they're two separate buildings.
Yeah, so it was proposed, the buildings would like to see two separate chapters at the buildings to start it at the middle of 6th grade, that's the earliest you can apply according to the chapter, they would be in at 6th and 7th, and then there would be a separate chapter in the high school. If not, you know, there would be, we, if we're going to continue with just one, it would be, you would apply again at the end of 7th grade, and we would have to clarify if it goes into 9th grade, because in the past, it was just 7th into 8th. Could have done to 8th, I don't know if the chapter had that in place.
I'm almost positive, well, I know for a fact that there are current 8th and 9th grade students that are members of the National Junior Honor Society, because they are, their bylaws even say like it is housed at, like, the high school, it is for members of Blackstone Regional High School. So, I don't know.
So I think it's valuable to have one in a, in a middle school. I think it's valuable, I wonder, and I know we're years away from a new building, but then when we have 7 to 12, then what do we have? Because what do we do with a half of a 6th gr, you know, to have a half of a 6th grade group seems, seems odd, but I do think it's valuable to have one in a middle school, and I do think it is something to work for as part of getting to the middle school, so the 5th graders would be like, oh, I got to work towards the National Honor Society, and, and schools that are 6th through 12 start in the second semester of the 6th, so it's probably not uncommon where, when the folks were talking to the national group, not uncommon.
I was going, so I was going to say, how common is that in a middle school for second semester? I mean, one of my biggest concerns with that is, we're on our second year of the kids being in this building, or the, and the 8th grade being in the high school, but second semester of 6th grade is the end of your second quarter report card with a physical grade, ever. Our 5th graders are still getting 1-3s, so they're going to have two report cards of, of.
Grades?
Letter grades or number grades, and.
That's when it starts, according to the chapter, not us.
Yeah, and that's usually when our honor roll breakfast was so crowded, you couldn't fit in the, you know, but it's so, it's such a new grading system, too, to, you know, how familiar are the kids with achieving those grades by second semester?
I think I'm still struggling with, once they get to the high school, there are so few things that they get to earn, where in this building, they have the student ambassadors, they have student council, they have the I L T team that does a ton, that I, I still feel like we're taking it away from those kids that earn it at the end of 7th grade.
I like the idea of it, I just think it maybe, that it used to be just 8th, end of 7th into 8th, so for this building, to me, end of 6th, just for 7th grade feels a little better, but I, I mean, I support it being in the building, I just, I guess I don't know when the right time is to introduce it to the kids.
That's something we can definitely have a conversation about, I know they, when we looked into what the chapter, the earliest you can do it is the middle of the 6th grade year, so.
And how much pressure is that on, I know how much pressure it was on the 8th graders for that one year to maintain that 90, right? So now you have, how, first semester of 6th grade, is it a true snapshot, or is that first year a snapshot?
Or would it make more sense to wait till the end of 6th grade?
And it's just that 7th grade.
And the good thing is they have a whole year for that, or the person who's coordinating it, to be able to send out that information, get students involved, understand what these grades really mean.
And it's something that the 6th graders would be reaching for, for 7th grade.
So there would be three separate chapters within the district?
There would. There would be middle school chapter, then the, the additional junior, because 8th and 9th is considered junior, and then high school doesn't start until 10th grade, so yes, there would be three.
It's the end of 10th grade, though.
Yes.
So now you have 8th and 9th graders in junior.
Yes.
And then you go into 10th grade, and you have a window of nothing.
Right, there was, I mean.
Well, there was a gap, the 9th and 10th.
Right.
Right?
For National Honor Society, you can't get inducted until the end of 10th grade.
Yeah, it's in the spring, so.
That's.
So what, how common is this?
Well, it's, I mean, it.
I think what we're familiar with is middle school and high school, how common is that junior piece, I guess?
Well, junior is the middle school, and then I think the fact that we have 8th graders that are now going to high school, they are, some schools are just having the Junior National Honor Society be like, it could be one, 6th, 7th, and 8th, for us, it makes more sense to be split, just because we have one building here and there. It's common enough that they have opened up the chapters to 6th and 7th and 8th, they It's common enough that they have opened up the chapters to sixth and seventh and eighth. Um, they have those opportunities.
How common is it for districts to have three separate chapters?
Well, I think it depends. If you have schools, I would say most schools who would potentially have three are going to be those schools that have eighth grade in the high school. You wouldn't have two, you know what I mean, at a middle school. I just, I think the principal, both principals were thinking that it gives students the opportunity to start thinking about this, earning this before they hit high school. Um.
But aren't they still earning it to be inducted at the end of seventh grade? Because isn't it a look back to their sixth and seventh grade?
They are. I think the, what middle school was thinking is they would like to have their
Their own.
Yes, to be role models for the kids while they're still there in the building, because they do get inducted and they move on. So I think they're looking, they'd like to see them inducted at some point, be in the building, you know, and then move forward. So that's what they had requested.
So to me, that one makes sense. I guess what I'd like to know is the schools around us that, which is Uxbridge and Bellingham, that have already moved their eighth graders to their high school, do they still have it, do they have two in their high school? Or should we be bringing it back to this building?
How do you bring it back?
The Junior Honor Society, it left with our eighth grade a year ago.
Well, I'm just saying, how do you bring it back though, when you have eighth and ninth graders in it? Do you stop for a few years? You know what I mean?
I mean, I, I don't know. I would like to know what our neighbors have done. Do, do they have that third chapter or? I, I'm, you know, do it in the middle of the year, people, the kids are already in it. But is it something that we should have already adjusted when this, when the buildings moved? I don't know.
We could have. I think what happened was because, you know, when they had the National Junior Honor Society at the end of the year, I think it was a, a discussion that was had toward the end of the year. We looked into it to find out what could possibly happen. Um, and I think the middle school felt very strongly at that time to be able to have an opportunity to have the kids be in honor society here. So they're still here in the building. They don't, they're just inducted and they leave. That's what they'd like to see happen, to have those two. I can't, I can't answer to you. I mean, I can get that information. It's, you know, they just like to start, you know, to be able to move forward and get some things moving. I can definitely get some of that information, but
Can we table it to when we have more info?
You can, you can choose to absolutely do whatever you'd like. So if you'd like to table it to, I think our beginning of October meeting.
I like Erin's idea of seeing what the other schools that have the eighth in the high school are doing.
I can get some of that information.
Could we get clarity on that seventh, the eighth and ninth grade piece too?
We will. And what I can also do is
Can we ask the National Junior Honor Society advisor, who happens to be sitting here, for clarity on that right now?
Well, we are waiting for the National Ju-, like, we're doing our appointment, so, yeah. I mean, one of our, one of our um individuals, we have two who have applied. They'd like to share.
At the high school level?
Junior Honor Society at the high school, yes.
So the kids haven't had a meeting yet?
I can't answer that question.
Communication has been sent out to the kids.
I didn't even know.
We have about like 19 students, eighth, ninth grade, and we're working on having our first meeting because we're waiting for, during the extended time period, so. But emails have gone out to them.
To the students.
So the eighth and ninth grade piece happened without us. Yeah, wait, right.
Well, that would, it was, that's what it was. We already had that in place before. They were inducted in, from seventh grade into eighth grade. That's what happened last year.
Um, I'd like to make a motion to table it to our next meeting, which is, I don't have the date.
October 9th.
October 9th.
So we'll table the second one we're requesting for the middle school till the 9th.
I'll second that. A motion um made by Tara and seconded by Chuck, and that's to table is this specific agenda item?
Yes, it would be for the addition of this second National Junior Honor Society at the middle school. And what I can also do is invite Mrs. Rumkid to come, and she can talk about
With, um, Carrie and Erin's information requests.
From Uxbridge and Bellingham for the local. I could absolutely get that.
It's a motion, seconded on the floor. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous.
Um, a fall sports update.
Darlene.
Good evening.
Hi, everyone. Uh, so fall sports are all underway. Um, our commitment deadline for all the varsity sports schedules is tomorrow. Um, so we're just cleaning up the last minute things, changing times. Um, we're waiting for one game for Minutemen for boys soccer, boys varsity soccer. Um, other than that, uh, we have 17 games for boys varsity soccer, 16 games for girls volleyball. All other varsity sports are at full capacity for um the cap of how many games we can have. Um, we're still looking for more JV and middle school games, and that we can continue to add over the season. Um, we really only have the commitment deadline for our varsity sports. Um, and then for middle school soccer, we have 10 games for the girls right now, nine for the boys. Again, we can still try and add a few more over the course of the season. All the schedules in Arbiter Live should be up to date, and they're all linked in the Sports View calendars. So if anything changes within the hour, they'll all be updated on the Sports View calendars. Um, on the athletics website, it also updated all the pages, so you can go right to Arbiter Live and it'll bring up the schedule for that sport. Uh, we started athlete of the week again this year. Our first athlete of the week was Nathan Oliveria. Um, he scored two touchdowns in their football scrimmage against Asabit. One was coming from an interception. Coaches nominate athletes each week to me for athlete of the week, and then they're required to give a little description of what they've done. Um, and then I'll look through all of them and choose one athlete to be nominated. Our homecoming schedule is complete right now, so we're starting with Thursday, the homecoming dance. Friday, we will have volleyball against Monty Tech. They'll have JV starting at 4:00 PM, varsity's starting at 5:00 PM. Um, and then we'll have a football game against Monty Tech that night, where cheer and band will perform at halftime. And then Saturday, we're going to kick off with a homecoming 5K run slash walk. This is the first year that we're hosting it. Um, we're hoping we can get a lot of participants. We have registration open right now on run signup, so anyone can register there. And we're also accepting donations for the cross country team on that run signup link as well.
What is the course?
It's the cross country course. So we'll start on the field right next to the track and kind of go around the perimeter of the campus. Um, each lap is one mile, so they'll do three loops. Um, and it's not ending and starting on the track like it did years before. It's just starting and ending on that field.
I heard our H R director is getting a, trying to put together a central office team to join the 5K run, run walk.
I'll do the 0.0.
Be a football coach, maybe having the whole football team walk it, so we're hoping they do that. Um, after the homecoming 5K, we'll have a girls soccer game against Northbridge. Um, we'll have JV playing at the same time at the lower field, and the varsity game will be at the game field. After that will be boys soccer against Monty Tech, and then field hockey against St. Bernards. Um, and then just a winter update, we did post all the coach positions for winter. We have the following positions, boys varsity basketball, girls varsity basketball, boys and girls JV basketball, boys and girls middle school basketball, um, high school cheer, middle school cheer, and indoor track. Um, we always reevaluate all the coaches and re-interview people every year. Um, we will be starting reviewing applicants um next week, and then I'll meet with the athletics advisory committee to start interviews right away. Um, I'm hoping to complete um all the selection by the end of this month. I know there's a lot of other schools waiting for us to decide who are hiring, so they know if they have to hire someone, so.
And I do think it's important, we're going to get moving as we are sooner than later, because we want to make those decisions. And we also want to make sure that we have the opportunity to bring on board our coaches before anyone else tries to.
Yes, definitely. We don't want other schools to take our top candidates. And that's it for my end.
You're good. Any questions?
Our chair and Carrie is our advisory.
Okay, so, boys soccer and girls volleyball are the two varsity sports that will not be at their max competition?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, how are you with filling some of our JV middle school schedules? Because I know, like, field hockey has five games, boys JV soccer has seven games, girls JV has 14. Are you, are there more in the works for those JV teams?
More for JV boys soccer. It's just a matter of getting those in Arbiter. Field hockey is a different discussion. We, I have to touch base with the field hockey coaches one more time. We're deciding whether it's worth pursuing the JV team, because there's almost too many swim players, so they're going to get, you know, overplayed having both teams. Um, so we're working out final options for that. Um, girls JV soccer, I think is, is looking great, but boys JV soccer, we do have to add more. And then middle school, I'm trying to at least get like two to three more games for middle school, boys and girls.
And Darlene, can you clarify, you said get into Arbiter. Does that mean that you get into Arbiter and there has to be an acceptance of that?
Yeah, so um, the person who's hosting the home game puts it in. So if it's our home game, I put it in. If they are hosting it, they put it in. Um, there's some games, like, all our, all our varsity games are usually tied to a JV game. So as long as they have a JV team, we add it and we accept it. So it's just a matter of, if, if they're hosting it, they just have to add the JV game and I accept it. A lot of things are being cleaned up like today and tomorrow, because it's our commitment deadline for varsity. And a lot of us just wanting to be done with the schedule, so.
Darlene, can I ask you um why we can't hit the max for soccer and volleyball? I know volleyball is missing four games.
Yeah.
I would really like to see every sport hit their max. It only makes us more competitive.
Yeah.
Um, is there any chance that those two will hit their max?
For volleyball, it's very unlikely. It's just hard to find teams. Um, we just added Milford two days ago. But we have one last push tomorrow to try and add some more volleyball. But volleyball is tough. We may only get one more by tomorrow.
I have a question. There's, field hockey team has a game on Columbus Day, the 13th of October. Is that game actually going to be played on Columbus Day? I know it's in our Arbiter as well as Leicester, I believe it's Leicester's Arbiter. But before that game is chosen as a senior game, just want to make sure they're going to play on a Monday holiday.
Yeah, because um I know baseball had Memorial Day. I questioned it, and that game didn't happen.
And we ended up moving it. So, let me see. We, I mean, we still have it in Arbiter, but I can reach out to Leicester and try to move it if we're worried about really not having a
If it's okay to play it that day, like, that's fine. I just, when I was putting the games into my own calendar, I was like, that's a holiday.
Questioning it, yeah. I'll reach out to the athletic director about that.
That's a home game?
Yes, it is a home game. Yeah, so I'm, I'm okay hosting it, but we'll just make sure all the girls are present and they can bring their full team, which sometimes is the problem for holidays. But yeah, that's a home game.
And how are our winter scheduling coming?
Good. I just added, um, one thing I forgot to mention. We had a leadership conference uh yesterday where I brought six students to. Um, and it was like an all-day education session to help mainly our seniors be better captains, but also learn how to be coachable, how to be a good teammate, and how to like teach the younger kids how to be coachable. Um, at that conference, I was able to secure um another tournament for boys basketball. So boys basketball, we just need one more game. Um, girls basketball, I think we need two more games. And then middle school, we're already getting emails about scheduling middle school basketball, so I'm feeling confident about that. Um, and then we already started securing some baseball games, not with dates, but at least saying like Douglas already agreed to two games with us, so I think it's going in the right direction.
Speaking of that, you said spring sports. You guys are having that meeting. I don't remember what it's called. The C.
Oh, our, our C MAC meeting?
Yeah, and then you guys are starting spring in the middle of September.
So any day, like, within this week or next week, we'll get our league schedule, and we're also, we're all instructed to fill our schedule that week with each other. Um, the priority is that all the C MAC schools, there's 35 schools, that we all pri- prioritize each other first before we reach out to schools outside of our league. Um, so we should have all the C MAC schools scheduled that week.
So we don't reach out for non-league games prior to guaranteed league games?
I mean, we can. Like, if we, if we have a preference, like, we can.
We need to.
Yeah.
Is there a rule on how many league, non-league we have to have? Sorry, Charles.
Go ahead.
Do you have, is there, like, does it have to be so many league versus non-league games?
No, no, as long as we play our required, like, they'll give us, um, say like 10 set league games that we have to play no matter what. It has to be home and away. Other than that, you can go wherever. Um, so yeah, there's, there's no limit on how many non-league games.
What we're trying to do is give the kids opportunities. We should have full schedules.
Yeah.
And not wait till the last minute. I know there are extenuating circumstances, but, you know, we're far, it's too, we've waited too long. We shouldn't have uh this type of struggle. All the kids, all the different sports, they have the ability to um achieve certain, you know, measurements, whether it's goals or baskets, uh, times, distance. And uh, you know, we want to make sports more attractive to keep kids here, to attract kids maybe from other school districts.
Totally agree.
So we've been really, I, I, it's my opinion that sports has really been struggling the last few years. And, you know, do you think that you have a hold on the scheduling where you're, you're caught up? I, I know you're not really, but
I feel like it depends on
If other people have, you know, before the summer, already done their scheduling, you know, and here we're in September.
I'm thinking, I'm, I'm going to piggyback you if that's okay. I'm thinking we need to be ahead, because it, it's great when you can get them the max games, right? They, they need to have the max games, but there's more than just scheduling the max games that goes into it. We want to schedule games for competition that benefits the team. So when we're filling the schedules last minute, that's not what's going to happen. We need to fill them ahead so that we are getting the games that are beneficial to the teams. I, right, is that?
Yeah. So we, we just want to get a, a handle on this, so we're not behind the eight ball.
Yeah.
Struggling to fill our schedule.
Yeah, and we can definitely reach out to the non-league schools, like, anytime we don't need to wait for the C MAC. We just can't give them a date, because we won't know what our league dates are, but we can certainly say, like, Douglas, like, hey, you're guaranteeing us two games. We can do that.
Can you put that, when you're doing your scheduling on the A D end in, in Arbiter, if you did your scheduling ahead of time with the non-league games, can you put them into Arbiter? Like, to confirm that we're going to play them, but put it as a TBA like you do with some other games? Can it go into Arbiter as a TBA?
I can put it as TBA, um.
Do you have to have a date for it though, if it goes into Arbiter? Like, can you make the date part TBA?
I mean, you can change the date.
That's what I was wondering, like, can you make the date?
Are you saying you keep the opponent, but you keep the date as TBA?
Yeah, can, is that?
I don't think you can do that. I mean, we have for basketball, we have like tournament, and they have it scheduled on a certain day, and it just says like dates to be determined. Um, but most people don't do that. Like, most people don't have the two teams without a solidified date.
So I just want to ask a clarifying question. C MAC, you said, is 35?
Yep, 35 schools.
Is that not for all of our seasons? Or is that, that's who we're with?
That's for, yep.
That took place of D V C.
Yes.
So
They've broken up into subgroups.
Why aren't we at capacity for our fall sports? If we have 35 communities that we're in a pool with, we're not, we're not playing them with volleyball and are we in the wrong season? Is volleyball played in another season for other schools?
Um, some schools choose not to play you based on your ranking. So like, if we're ranked middle or low, like, a school that's ranked high isn't going to want to play us, because if by chance they lose, their power rankings tank. If by chance they win, it still won't make a difference. So there are some factors with power rankings. Um.
We've also had some opportunities to play other teams, and our coaches have requested to not schedule those games sometimes, not a lot.
But I can expect that, and so if the, if it's going to be a team that demolishes a plus 10-0, I can respect a coach saying, we'd rather not.
I'm wondering if at the end of each season, you should get a running list from the coaches then, instead of like the following right before the seas, the new season starts? So check in with them at the end of their season, say who's not beneficial, who is beneficial, maybe and do it
Almost like an exit interview?
Yeah, like, do it a year before. Yes, like an exit, yes.
We can definitely do that, but I think we also need, I think what we're missing is the verbal commitments with coaches. Like, even if that game just ended, say, hey, can we agree to have two games next year? I think I agree.
Coaches come and go, so it's really that relationship with the A D from other schools.
Yeah, which we can do, but from what I've noticed, it's a lot easier to get games when the two coaches are on board. Um, there's a lot of politics involved, working with all the different athletic directors and scheduling with them. I think it's a lot of
You wouldn't, you wouldn't just wait, and I hear what Chuck is saying too, but you would take advantage of both the relationships with the coach
Yeah, definitely.
And then also your relationship with the A D.
Yes.
We wouldn't put one over. Okay, so we need to do both.
Both, yeah.
Uh, my other question is how are our fall cheerleaders doing? how are our fall cheerleaders doing? We had to end that season abruptly.
Yeah.
Um, last year, so is there a new coach in place for them for the fall?
Yes.
The coaching positions for winter, is that coach expected to stay or is, was that on your list of available positions?
So they do get reevaluated. She's not guaranteed the winter position, however, she's interested in continuing for the winter. And during the fall season, they are prepping for competition. So ideally, we have the same person for the winter season. Um, we hired Amanda Mograph. She was a cheerleader here. I think she's great. Um, she has a really strong personality and can make sure there's, there's like no interpersonal issues on the team as well. I think practices have been going really well. I've been at every cheer practice for high school. Um, and I think it's, I think it's been going well.
Is it one team right now?
One high school team and one middle school team.
So we have two right now?
Yes.
And um, do they all have a uniform?
Um, high school, I'm picking up three actually here. Um, and then they will have, we'll have the full 15 that we've had.
What about middle school?
Middle school, yeah. As far as I'm aware, they have all their uniforms.
And I don't know if that needs to come to, as a committee discussion at some point, but we had talked in athletic advisory about, I know we rehire coaches every season. But we might want to look at fall and winter for cheer, hiring one coach.
Yeah, instead of.
To continue through those two seasons.
Yeah, instead of being reevaluated because they really need the whole fall season to prepare for winter. So if you ever switch coaches, it just wouldn't work because they would already have to pay for their music, pay for the choreography during the fall season. I also think just like the team selection should just be one season instead of separated by a fall and winter.
So maybe when we look at it the next year, we look at
Yeah.
a, a cheer coach for our fall winter coach, which makes complete sense.
Yeah.
It's a different type.
So just to clarify, we have two cheer teams, one coach right now.
Two coaches, two cheer teams. Yeah, so a separate middle school coach and a separate high school coach.
You said Amanda, who's the other coach?
Uh, Becky Boulay, the same middle school coach from last year. And they practice two separate times. They don't overlap at all.
Are they, and they're not working together in, for cheer or competition?
No.
So where are our middle school fall cheerleaders right now? Are they going to varsity football games?
No, so um our middle school, our middle school cheerleaders will go to the volleyball games just because we don't have JV football this year, and our varsity cheerleaders will go to the football games.
I know volleyball was the coach.
They were excited about that, yeah.
Because we also don't have JV football this year, so we could put our middle school cheerleaders at JV football.
That's four stipends, correct? Four? For, for fall and winter?
For both, yes, for two. Yep, doing both seasons.
Which I believe is what we had for stipends because it used to be a varsity and a JV. Now it's varsity now.
Okay, thank you very much for that update.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Darlene.
Next up, still yours, Joe.
Yes, this'll be quick. So the next step is homecoming. I know that our student reps talked about it, Darlene did as well. But um, we're, we are excited that our, um, our homecoming is gonna be joined by the Blackstone Parks and Rec and Alliance Club, the Fall Fest. We actually have a meeting tomorrow um to kind of discuss the details so that we're all on the same page. So I, I think it'll be great. I think it, you know, to expand and make a community event, so. Um, and I, I was able to, in my community message, send all this information out to families too, just to give them a heads up on. And that'll take place, the, the community full day is on the 27th, and that's from 11 to 4. And additionally, we have games going on that day as well.
And I have, well, I shouldn't say I have, uh, Mrs. Follis had one of her interns reach out to all of the class advisors and groups at the high school to see if any of them are interested in putting tables, concessions, whatever, up that day as well. So hopefully we'll have a lot of high school students in and around and cheering on their friends and family members supporting our town vendors and everything, so.
That'd be great. Were you able to secure any food trucks? I know you were looking at that. Not yet.
Happens to be another big, huge fall festival, a couple towns over that very same.
So they're all busy.
Well, you need food trucks?
Yeah.
I'll talk you offline.
Good.
We have a, we have a business in town, one of the shops on Main Street that they have functions with food trucks. And uh, so I'll hook you up with them.
And then finally, just again, the meet the teacher and open house parent conferences. This did go out in the community message. Uh, but the meet teacher, open house was actually uh September 11th for our um middle school from 6:30 to 7:30. BMR High School is September 17th from 6 to 7, and the middle school is the 22nd from 6 to 7. And our principals already have, and again, was already included in the community messages, our parent teacher conferences. Um, it is out in the notice that I sent and the principal sent it, but Milva Elementary and our preschool is November 6th from 3:20 to 5:20 and November 13th from 4:30 to 7:30. The middle school is the 19th of November from 4:30 to 7:30 and the November 20th from 2:40 to 4:40. And the high school has the two dates, one of November 19th, 2:30 to 4:30, and the 20th from 4:40 to 7:30. And they, the principals did work together to make sure the times are flipped, so there wasn't a lot of overlap for that. And again, principals will be sending this out again as a reminder to our community because some of the um parent teacher conferences, of course, are, are scheduled. Um, so all of that information will be going out to families. But if they do have any questions, I encourage them to reach out to our principals for any updates they may need.
Very good. Next up is the final business office report from Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Um, the first one is the budget journal entries that I'm requesting approval for. Uh, there are a few here. A couple of them were allocations of funds that we needed to pay for some of the programs and product that we need to purchase that, but slightly underfunded. And the others are primarily just, the ones that are crossing the function code, that is, setting up beginning balances for some of our grants. There's really nothing um extraordinary here to report on.
Very good. Any questions on the journal entry report? Take a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the journal entries.
Motion by, made by Jane?
Second.
Second by Tara and Chuck. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you. Uh, next one's just the personnel report for um activity for hirings and retireings or resignings, uh, just to be placed on file. Uh, then we move on to the expenditure report. Again, nothing, um, this is just up to date. These reports are up to date. It's printed on the 14th, um, but they actually, that should have been changed. It's up to date through the end of August 30, uh, August on the 31st, so it's a full month. Um, no um activity that's out of line. Again, we're projecting full use of the budget, so obviously it's um, you know, it's early on to be doing a, a full accurate uh projection. Um, but you can see that there is a slight surplus showing, but that's mainly because we don't budget the interest expense on the bank accounts that come in. So that when it does come in, it does show up as a, a surplus on those lines. But nothing out of the ordinary to report on, on this either. Any questions on that? And again, I, I did include the second report that does, does break it out by function code and cost center, that if you find value to that, you can look at it by that way. So the next one is the entitlement grants. Um, this happens every year. We budget our entitlement grants, the federal entitlement grants, based on an estimate of what we get, we're awarded in the previous year. Um, now we have our actual awards that we were given, and I'll run through each one of these. Our Title I grant, we budgeted $213,000. The final award that we were provided was $275,145. Our IDEA 240 grant, we budgeted $460,000. The final award that we were given was $478,493. Our IDEA pre-K 262 grant, we budgeted $22,000. Our final award was $23,068. Our Title II grant, we budgeted $35,000. Final award was $39,734. And our Title IV grant, we budgeted $15,000 and our final award was $19,658. So we had a total positive adjustment of uh $91,098, which is, it's, that's a good thing for the district. And I would just request a, approval to accept these, these grants.
And I, I just want to mention that I know we didn't have an adjustment, but this year was the first year that we actually received a Title III grant.
Yes.
It wasn't huge. It was just, just over $10,000. And that money has to be specifically spent on our English language honor program, but it is, as long as I've been here, this is the first year we actually received any funding for Title III.
Great. Jill, is that because our numbers have increased for that?
They're starting to grow. Yeah, they are.
Motion to accept the.
Thank you.
Motion made by Jane.
FY26 grant awards.
Seconded up by you, Matt? I just, I'll just, my only comments is these are all federal grants that it was concerned several months ago.
That they weren't gonna come through.
Absolutely. Concerned by, concerns by, concerns by some, not by, not by all.
Still waiting for Title V.
Any, I'm sorry. Any further uh discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Uh, next one is the excess and deficiencies. Happy to announce that we did get our certified uh excess and deficiency for fiscal year. The total amount was $1,435,069. It's about $25,000 below the 25%, uh, the 5% threshold that we can get, so kind of a bullseye. That was intentional. It wasn't like we, ooh, too close.
I just, I'm not gonna go look at it right now, but
Yes.
when we got this email, I don't think the sentence here of, for your district, this excess amount equals zero. I was trying to do the math in my head, you know, of the five, I was no, I emailed you, I was like, I didn't see this coming. It was never, that number was never on this, when we were every, every meeting.
The excess and deficiency, that's right.
No, but it shows you where you're ending your year. So, but we did have,
Yes.
we had money that had to be recertified for, that was coming back to us from a tech grant, right? That, that's where this came from?
Um.
What we ended our budget year with.
This is, basically what they do is they take your ending fund balance that you had, that was certified for the previous fiscal year. There's adjustments that are made, not your beginning starting balance in their calculation. Then you take all your revenue and expend, plus this include, they did include some capital here too. Um, plus they take your revenue expenses, plus and minus, to come down to what the actual full amount was. And then they also take into consideration any funds that have deficits in them, because that's a, they bring everything down to cash, which is quite frankly, it's odd to me, but whatever. They bring it down to cash. So when they take out those deficits that have to be covered by the general fund, then they come to their final number. So what you're seeing in my report is just revenue to expense, general fund only operation. This is taking into account all funds and all activity.
Which is more than
Yes.
our general, our, our daily operating budget.
That's right.
So it's super important that we keep it below 5%.
Absolutely, and that was intentional.
Because if it were above, and I, it's not that it's a negative, but it, it, it kind of is mismanagement of the, but if, if we were above 5% on this number, we would be giving the money back to our towns.
That's right.
That's the way the law reads.
Yep.
If we're giving money back to our towns, it, it kind of means that the budget wasn't spent the way we intended for it to be. Now, it could be for some amazing grants that we received during the year that offset other thi, other items we budgeted for. But I think our job as a committee, it's important to make sure we're realizing the, you know, opportunity to spend that money if a grant came in
Yep.
on the other needs. Kind of like the last meeting at the end of the year that I said, I meant to go back and look at it, but, and I was like, can't we um encumber that from this year for something like a capital item? Uh, but I, I didn't even realize this number was as high as it was.
Sure. And that was, I mean, there were some expenditures that were moved from some of the revolving funds into the general fund. There was some back and forth that was happening intentionally to get as close to the 5% as we could without exceeding the 5%. So.
Good job.
Job well done.
Yeah, is it 700,000 with the prepayment? Is that?
That, that's also factors in because that prepayment we lost last year, which would have put us at 1.3, that 790 has rolled into this. That is a big, it is a big piece of this.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's not like we're sit, we're juicing the budget
No, no.
like to your point.
Right. It, it's a great place to start. I've never seen it this high.
Never.
Ever. We, we, as a committee, many years ago made a commitment to make sure it was never lower than 500.
Sure.
And there have been several years more recent that we were lower than that.
Right.
And, but committee has changed and, and needs and financial pieces have changed. And in good faith, we needed to put money towards our budget to get our towns to contribute there. So that, that's where this comes from, but I'm not going to lie, I, I don't think my email showed this zero. And I was trying to do the math and it, it's no math Thursday.
And when, and then there, initially I thought that the comparison of 5% was just the operating side of the, of the, of the budget. It includes capital. So that, I wasn't aware of, so that was actually added some ability to give us some access for next year's budget.
Okay.
Um, I will stress though, I mean, really what this represents, how would you use your excess and deficiencies? You'd have to spend into your fund balance. You'd have to spend above and beyond
Right.
to reduce your fund balance. So using this money to further continue operations, like sometimes we have to. Sometimes we, we did $500,000 to help our operating to keep the town's assessments down. But if you continuously do that year over year over year, eventually you're not gonna have any money. It's gonna go away and you're gonna have all these operating costs that you're gonna have to figure out what to do with. So we just have to be careful going forward, how much of this excess and deficiency we use and what, excuse me, what it's used for. You know, one-time expenditures are great. Those are perfect, but you know, if you start doing a lot of positions and things that you're gonna know you're gonna need year over year, you might have a problem a few years down the road.
You never use, like the towns never use free cash to fund a position, never use grants to fund a position for long-term.
This is, in the past, been pre-purchasing or or, you know, what you, the opposite of what you're saying, is not putting it into fund next year's budget, but I mean, we have a building project, hopefully at the forefront. We, we cannot have more money than this. We've, it's been a while since we've tried to have a separate account, but um we could totally say it's going to a field. Just throwing it up there.
That's funny you said that because one of the things I was recommending is at some point in time, and I know it's hard because it, the towns may look at this as a way to circumvent the 5%, but we have capital needs that are popping up because of this high school, the age of the high school, that just come out of nowhere. And they're not a couple thousand dollars all the time. Seventeen thousand dollars, sixteen thousand dollars, a twenty thousand dollar boiler issue. It'd be nice to have a capital revolving fund or stabilization for capital that we could move some of our excess and deficiencies into. But I don't know the, the politics around that could be difficult.
We have a stabilization.
For specifically the feasibility study.
So you'd have to have a stabilization specifically for capital.
That's right.
Yeah.
I asked about that.
The issue with that is every one of those stabilization accounts,
Yep.
then will allow for 5% of the town's
That's correct.
contributions.
That's right.
Not the total budget, so, and, and that'll probably be frowned
That's right, that's right.
frowned upon by that.
But then the other option.
We've tipped over the years accused of having a secret account.
That's right.
Which we don't.
You're right. That's how, that's how it's looked at, but I guess, I mean.
But to your point, the, this, this, the, the excess and deficiency for this, I think since I've been on there, conservatively, has been used to contribute back to offset the towns.
Yes, it's been, it's been a.
And based on what we can almost guaranteed revenues, like, but at a conservative look at it, it has been used to offset.
And we've been able to, the, at least the two budget cycles I've gone through here, we've been able to monitor our expenditures and make adjustments where we've never really even spent into that excess and deficiency that we budgeted. You know, we, we didn't have to go into that. Um, and not only that's the goal, right? You, you budget 100% what you think you're gonna need, worst case scenario, the best you can, keep the expenses down. But then throughout the year, you've gotta take steps to watch what you're spending to see if you can save that money and find some savings and hopefully not have to go to the town with a deficit or eating into the excess and deficiencies.
Well, and the pre-purchasing, it kind of seals the deal that there's money coming back because you had it budgeted on the line.
That's right.
You know that that's gonna be there at the end of the next cycle, so putting it back in our budget doesn't really do that. putting it back in our budget doesn't really do that.
But, you know, we're also certifying budgets without healthcare, final costs.
That's correct, that's right, it's all, it's all westernal.
And the towns go through the same thing.
You're absolutely right. You just never know. So that's it, I'm just looking for a vote to
Yeah, the mechanism there, the 5% is to keep us on our toes, to make, you know, and let the towns, let us know that they know that we have the money and things, so it's, it's a checks and balances, and historically, we've reminded each other, the towns. So a motion, so you're looking for a motion to
To accept it.
Accept the certified E and D.
Yep.
So a move. Motion made by Chuck.
Second.
Seconded by Carrie. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
So the next item is a request to use some of that.
Here we go.
When I was doing the closing of the fiscal year, normally what I would do is I'd, we had a lot of funds we talked about that had been rolling from year over year with fund balances that were deficits. It's not big dollars, small amounts, whether from just being, things being posted incorrectly, or whatever it was from years ago. So I wanted to move to clean up all those funds, close them out, and get them off the books as best we can. I had set it up to do transfers into the general fund, let the general fund cover the cost of these fund balances, which would have reduced our E and D, by the way. But the DLS, when they saw that, said, "No, you can't do that." And I can't, I understand why, but I want to stay friendly with DLS, because they're doing our E and D. They said you have to put those all back, and then request to do it through your excess and deficiency once it's certified. I'll be honest with you, and Kristen and I are gonna make a call tomorrow if this is approved, I don't even know how you post that, because that E and D is just a number.
Yeah.
There's no line to post that to. So I have to figure that, we'll figure that out and get it done, but if you can approve the use of it, it's $41,056.18, that'll get rid of all these miscellaneous funds that are listed here for you, that are carrying these unknown deficits, just from some kind of bookings that have been happening.
So I'll be honest with you, we've used E and D before, and I believe, if I remember correctly, it, there is, it's not a line that you're writing from.
Right.
The budget goes negative, and then you
Explain the negative as use of E and D.
Next year.
And that might be the case.
I believe that, we used it for sewer issue of the high school once, and it was explained to us that it's actually going to be a negative line on
That's what reduces your fund balance that year.
And then by the end of the year, you're, you look negative.
Are we voting on that at the end of the year to offset, is that what we did?
But he, but you basically just said, DLS said you can't pay your bills?
These aren't bills, these are just fund balances that are sitting there, they're just neg, they're deficit fund balances on each one of these grants.
I see, so we owe ourselves the money.
Right, basically.
So we're authorizing for you to use.
The money we have to pay money we don't have.
Then it's a matter of bookkeeping after that.
That's right. And it might be, like you just said, that makes the most sense to me, I always think it was
That's what I remember.
Transfer out of these accounts, it's not really an expense line, it's a transfer out.
Yeah.
And an acceptance of the general fund transfer in, it's a separate line that will show up, and the auditors, we can give them the school committee's approval to use that E and D.
Still make your phone call, but that is what I remember.
Joe, can I ask a question about one of the amounts on the
Sure.
The cell phone pile at $25,000, is that just the lock boxes that we put in?
No, I think that was a fund from prior to that. That's been there for at least two years, or it seems like it's been rolling.
I thought we had a grant.
I'm not sure what it was from, it's, I know it's Fund 61, it must have been a grant. There were actually two cellphone grants at one point in time, I don't even know why. But it's not the lock boxes we just purchased.
How did we pay for those?
Those are general fund.
Okay. So.
So we overspent a grant that, for item that wasn't used.
By $25,000.
And it may have been that they posted too much, that maybe something went into that grant years ago that should've, right, maybe they posted it to the wrong account number?
Yeah.
And it just was never caught.
I'll be surprised if something was posted to the wrong account number after the last year or so. That wouldn't have happened before you, Joe.
No, no.
So I'll make a motion to allocate $41,056.18 out of excess and deficiency to cover, to clear deficit balances.
Motion made by Jane.
Don't ask me to repeat it.
Seconded by Carrie. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
I just think for the record, it needs to be documented as a roll call for E and D, or the two-thirds, so maybe roll call just to cover that.
Sure, yeah, well, I'll do that, but I think that motion is authorizing, and then, so I think when we do the journal entries from the E and D, that may be the time, but I will, just on the ear, on the side of caution, motion is made by Jane, seconded by Carrie, to expend $41,000
$56.18.
From E and D to cover previous bills. And with that, I'll take a roll call vote, Jane?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Aaron? Matt?
Yes.
Chuck?
Yes.
Yes.
Tara is a yes, and I'm a yes. It's unanimous.
Thank you. Just, this is just an update on the end-of-year report, it's complete. It's ready to be uploaded and filed. I just need to get some signatures tonight when we're done with the meeting. I think it looks pretty good. I've cleared all the errors that were on the sheet, it should be okay, it'll just fall to Kristen if there's any amendments that need to be done, but I'm hoping they're few and far between. So I just wanted to give you that update.
Notice he says thinks, it's all set.
I have no doubt.
It's only my second one, so. But thank you, that's it.
Thank you very much, Joe.
Thank you.
Moving on, facilities report.
Excuse me.
Did get chilly in here, Scott, I saw you put your sweatshirt on.
Yes, thank you.
No, no.
I was gonna come up with the hood on and everything.
And Jill's like, "It feels good in here." Oh, you are?
I'd rather be cold.
Yeah, I know.
Just putting the freeze on us.
Jill's always cool.
So the large sinkhole was repaired at the high school, and while they were there, they patched a few potholes for us, which was very kind of them. That's complete. The sewer pump station is back up and running as normal. And also, with that, we had Pedersky Corporation come out and clean the sewer tanks at both the high school and Early Village, which we are responsible for. So that was done on Monday. Okeefloring came back and refinished the gym floor on Thursday, 8/21, and while they were there, they repaired the new section of floor, which was already peeling up due to the, I guess, the glossiness of the paint. So he sanded it down, re-earthened, repainted the purple, and re-earthened everything. So, looks good, should hold up. Middle school, the first floor boys' bathroom, as you know, that had the sinkhole, that was repaired prior to the start of school. Have to say it looks rather well. Almost can't even tell it was done. New basketball rim has been ordered for the outside basketball hoops. They keep falling over and getting dented and breaking, so new one was on order, we purchased it through Amazon, it came in, it was not large enough to fit a basketball through.
Oh, no.
I don't know how that was possible, but regulation size has been ordered along with the net, so we're just waiting for that to come in. It should be in on Tuesday. I will have the head custodian pick it up at the central office and install it. That being said, also, Mr. McCord donated an extra basketball hoop. So, we got two out there now, three. One of the ones we purchased last year fell over, and it did kind of get bent, so we're gonna pull that one, I'll put that one aside, so we'll have two across the parking lot. The grease trap was pumped out here at the middle school as well, that was done on 8/29. Evron was scheduled to come out and change the failing valve on a fire pump inside the fire pump room. And they're gonna perform the required five-year hydrostatic testing. We're just setting up a date to get that completed. Not much at AFM JFK. We are continuing to clean out the rooms that were emptied out. They were just, you know, everything was done in such a haze, so we wanna organize the furniture that is in there and get it all cleaned up.
Scott, you didn't mention my potential new office pet.
Yes.
Pet?
Jill has been complaining about a scratching-type noise.
Oh, no.
Oh, no.
Come to find out, it was more of a
Yes, guess what I have?
Woodpecker?
Woodpecker?
So she's got a woodpecker, packing a hole in the side of the sofa.
Hasn't quite made its way into my office yet, but it's
It'll never make its way inside the office.
What are you gonna do with that woodpecker? You're gonna build like a little woodpecker box, right?
Good thing we're not talking about it.
He found a piece of what he likes.
No, he sent me a video today, I said, "Scott, my friend is back."
You found it?
You can see him.
I watched him.
And then we catch Jill on the camera feeding him.
A woodpecker? I kept saying, "Scott."
Good luck, you want them at your house? Because I got a few I'd like to send that way, too.
I kept telling him, "There's a sound," and I don't think he believed me at first, and finally I said, "I'm telling you, there is something there." And he did look, and first we found the little
Thought it was a squirrel, hoping for a chipmunk.
He should stop in November.
Can I request that we not meet for the homecoming meeting? It's on the outside.
I hope he pays you a visit. That, and the courtyards are really getting overgrown, so I'm gonna have the groundskeeper go in there and clean that up. Millville Elementary School, our brand pavement did complete the handicap access walkway. That came out really nice.
It looks great.
Yeah, nice and smooth, even. New kitchen equipment is fully operational, and that was done prior to the first day of school. And FM generator came out to replace the luver motor. This luver opens up and closes as the generator starts up, it allows fresh air to come in, cool the engine off, and go into the intake manifold as well. They were also scheduled to change the radiator at the same time, but the manufacturer sent the wrong one. So, that is now being reordered and scheduled to be changed when it arrives. In the meantime, the generator is fully functional. And that's complete, sir? Any questions, concerns, comments?
Sports fields look good.
Yeah, we do wanna get on the baseball field, like I told Tara. As soon, the grass is starting to slow down now, so we can start focusing on such things as the courtyard, the baseball fields.
Up at the track, the opposing team was complimenting how good the grass looked today.
We get so many compliments on that field.
Yeah.
True Green, I just got notification today that True Green is coming out on the 16th and 18th to irrigate it and oversee it, both the lower soccer field and the track. So you're gonna see plugs of dirt up there, but it'll blend in. Irrigation system is up and running, and I think I reported on the last report that I had them focus the irrigation system on the lower soccer field to be mainly on that field. So we shut down sprinkler heads on the baseball fields that weren't being used and stuff.
There was a tent, you know those pop-up tents, the track team uses? It was up on the football field. That was taken, taken away. It would have been blown over.
I thought that was the boosters.
It was ours. It's bent, and it's just sitting like on the wooden platform.
Yeah.
We were thinking, you know, can it be salvaged, but that, I think you should do something with it before the
Yeah, either get it, if it's all bent, we'll have to remove it.
Yeah, I think Jason spoke about that.
Yeah. We had bought, we bought two pop-up ones with BMR logos on them and stuff.
So one of them got blown away by, the wind took it and bent.
Really?
The standard, so that's not the boosters. I've got the tent put away.
So you saved the top of it?
Yeah.
Okay. So, even if we have to buy another frame. Is that good? Looking forward to homecoming. Yeah, it's unbelievable, the compliments we get on that football field.
Looks good when you drive by, too.
It does.
Yeah. Especially when it's freshly painted.
Imagine what it will look like with bleachers in a field house.
Outdoor lighting.
Outdoor lighting. It will be amazing.
The band having their home show there.
Electricity would be a big bonus to that.
It's coming.
Yeah, it is, 100%.
We good?
Okay, thank you, Scott.
You're welcome. Oh, I do have one surplus.
Yeah.
One of the Millville kitchen appliances, it was the old oven-stove combination. Kitchen workers wanted to save it for the stove pot, stove top part, the ovens weren't working anymore. But due to the new equipment, everything wouldn't fit underneath the range in the fire suppression system, so we had to take it out, and, like I said, the ovens weren't working, they really didn't use the stove tops, they just wanted to hold on to it, melt butter and stuff like that, but it's not a big use for it, so we're gonna surplus that. And we bought additional freezers and refrigerators, and we put those in the old dishwashing room, and there was a stainless steel countertop in there that we had to take out. So, we're gonna get scrapped out, too.
And I just wanted to mention surplus, if you recall, I don't know if it was last school committee or one before, we had come in to book the surplus for the books, all the extra books, you'll notice when you walked in, our kids are loving it, Mrs. Ramka sends me, Dr. Ramka sends me pictures sometimes, the kids are going through, they're choosing books, they're reading them, they're keeping them, they're taking them, so it was great to be able to have those books at their, you know, the level for the middle school to use, so they, you know, do that during their break, so.
Not just kids, I saw staff going to them as well.
I think they are, too, yes. Well, they took out what they, you know, needed for like, to improve this library here, but it's really great to be able to have that opportunity for the kids as well.
Right, yeah, they brought a lot of the younger.
Couldn't help but notice Dr. Remker's lightsides cutout.
And I wondered, is it the right height?
I have a picture of Mrs. Remker on top of the Zamboni, keeping an eye on the staff as they were cleaning throughout the summer. Totally congratulating, you're on top of things, glad to see it.
So, Scott, while you're still here, but I'll take a vote on the surplus. Motion to approve the surplus recommended by Scott.
Motion by Tara.
Second.
Seconded by Chuck. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. And facilities use requests while you're here, looks like there's a lot of them.
There's a lot of them.
Make sure.
Let me run through them.
Yes, Joe, please.
The first two, oh, South football pitchers, that is previously approved, they're just changing the date and location that they'd like to use. So there's no change except for that date that they want to use, which is now October 4th. And the locations from the high school to the middle school gymnasium. Okay, do we want to approve them one at a time, or just run through them?
We can keep going, if, and what we'll do is we'll hold, if there's, if there's so many, we'll hold, if there's
And then we'll vote on the rest of them.
The next one is express chair practice, it's same thing, same location, just date and time has changed. They're going from 9:16 to 11:14, Tuesdays through Fridays, from 6:15 to 18:15. So previously approved, just changing their date and time. The next one is Girl Scout Troop 632, they're Group 1. They're looking to use Wednesday nights from October 1st to June 10th, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. At the middle school cafeteria, obviously no charge to them as a Group 1. And the next one is Bimble. Basketball tryouts and evaluations. They're look, they're a Group 2, looking to use Monday through Thursday from 10:27 to 10:30, from 5:30 to 8:30 p.m. at the middle school gymnasium.
None of those conflict with the other Tuesday?
No, all these dates, I believe, have been verified, that nothing should conflict. In different schools.
Joe, can I ask a question? Why is, just, maybe I don't understand the groupings, but Girl Scouts are Group 1?
Yes.
But are the town youth sports are a Group 2?
That's just the way, from what I understand, the town sports are made up of a percentage of our students, right?
And they pay to participate?
There's a fee.
Profit. They pay, they pay for custodians.
If, if needed, yes. For, on the Saturday and Sunday. Right. I think play.
But I'm saying kids pay to participate, with the Girl Scouts, they don't.
There's also, yeah, oh, no, Girl Scouts pay to participate. Right, but on this one, there's no fee because it's during, I believe there's no fee.
No, what they're saying is the program itself.
Right, I just didn't know why they were classified.
Because on the weekends. And it doesn't have, isn't there like a federal, there's a federal
And it doesn't have, isn't there like a federal, there's a federal protection for scouting?
It's a nonprofit, like...
Nonprofit.
No, it's actually a federal protection for scouting individuals, like specifically, uh, for um, public schools.
We had a...
I don't know if it has something to do with that.
I'm just curious when they were one right after the other.
Um, good, keep going. And then, like I said, Bimble is for basketball tryouts and evaluations. That's a Group Two, from Monday through Thursday, from 10:27 to 10:30, from 5:30 to 8:30 at the middle school gymnasium. And moving along is Green Roy Academy of Irish Dance. It's an Irish dance holiday performance, they are a Group Three. They're looking for December 12th, Friday, from 3:30 to 8:30 at the high school. They'll be using the auditorium and the cafeteria.
I'll have to ask you, like, are they putting on a show, they're obviously putting on a show, right?
Yes.
Holiday show.
It's a what, did you say competition?
No, it's their holiday performance.
Holiday performance.
Yeah, their recital. Are you going?
I am now, yeah, I mean, I, yeah.
I'm sure you have to buy a ticket, just...
Yeah, that's fine. Nice to see that here.
Uh, the next one is um, this is the program that Chuck is running for open basketball, where they're doing some um, development conditioning skills. Obviously it's a Group One, it's all our students. And it's Mondays and Wednesdays from September 3rd to 11:26, from 7:30 to 9:00 at the high school. And I believe it's the final one? Yep, final one is the Homecoming Community Day that we were just talking about. That's a Group Three and it's $5,000.
Yeah, we're gonna vote down that one after everything we just planned.
It's, it's a Group One on Saturday, September 27th, from 11:00 to 4:00. And it's just using the outside fields, parking lots, cafeteria and kitchen.
So just one question about that, has the band been notified that they need to relocate that day?
That's a good question, I'll make sure they do. I believe they have them, but I'll verify that.
Are they performing at the football game that day?
That's Friday night, though.
The Friday night game, but Saturdays is competition day, but they usually start their day around 8:00 or 9:00 AM in their, on their field, which is the parking lot.
Okay.
And other year, like when there's football games, whatnot, they usually come here or I guess field of their choice, wherever it's not as wet. But, just so they know ahead of time.
Absolutely.
That this is where their trucks and et cetera need to be.
I will recount to Scott.
Joe, did you say that was a Group Three?
I'm sure they have a football schedule.
I was only kidding.
We're gonna adjust the uh, field use.
That's right, that's right.
Roosevelt Park on baseball time. Four grand a game.
It is a, for the record, a Group One, there is no charge.
No, $5,000.
But we'll make an exception to that.
This is, that's it, that's everything.
Joe can say that because he's not gonna be here after that.
To pay the bill.
Good enough, his last paycheck was donating.
No, you know, it was so nice.
Uh, and are there any questions or um, any holes on any of these multi, multiple requests?
Can I vote if my request is in there?
So I will say, it's um...
My name's on one of them, too.
I will say that is, there's no gain of uh, so I will say that we'll take a vote on all of them with the understanding that Chuck is abstaining on the open basketball gym because it's his request and Carrie's abstaining on the homecoming. That fair enough to cover us just in case anybody's watching and wants to put in open meeting law violations or what have you on us. Again.
Again.
Um, so I'll let that, let the record reflect that we're gonna vote on them together and Chuck will be abstaining for one individual one and Carrie will be abstaining from her request.
Sounds good.
Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, it's unanimous. Thank you, Scott. Scott, that stainless steel counter, that's still, has that already been disposed, oh, not yet, obviously, we just voted on it. Okay.
The kitchen?
What was that? Huh?
The kitchen?
Kitchen. We did vote on that, right?
Yes.
All right. School committee forum, anyone have anything?
I have something.
Carrie?
I don't know if this is something, a topic that needs to go to policy subcommittee first or if it needs to come to our agenda, but Joe and I have um, emailed back and forth a little bit this week. He had sent an email out to some of the sports boosters, right, was it just for sports, right?
True, yeah.
Asking for their 501(c)(3) status, if they do not have a 501(c)(3) status. Um, they were gonna be designated as a parent-run organization, which meant that they may not use the district logo or the district name, can't display signage, can't make announcements promoting their fundraising. Um, any signage would be removed. If you do have the 501(c)(3) and you are designated as a booster club, then obviously you'd be able to use all of those things. Um, I brought up the question as to the logo that the district uses, the one that kinda resembles like the Patriots flying Elvis, was actually designed by a football booster parent. So I questioned how the district could take ownership over that and limit who and what, when can you use.
That one right there?
Yes.
Okay. It has like a lightning bolt behind it.
Yeah. Um, so I had a question that, um, to me it felt like this was a policy. Joe and I did look at the policies that kinda reference boosters. I don't see these things within those policies, so I didn't know. Matt, maybe you would weigh in as policy subcommittee chair on that? I don't know where we need to go with this.
This was the previous, we have spoken about this in previous years, um, about um, boosters having, you know, how they're, how they're organized, where they have their accounts and everything. I know at one point it was held under the district's accounts and, you know, there was some questions on that as well. I don't know about the, the logo, I imagine that's intellectual property, but if there's no trademark or anything, I don't know.
Say that after the meeting and say trademark it.
Yeah, true, yeah. Um, we can go back to the old logo. Um, but I think that's something that we should definitely, I was actually gonna talk about this offline with some of you guys. Just because I'm seeing a lot of fundraising by sports organizations and we don't want the students to in any way be, you know, harmed or, you know, not get, you know, the benefit of these funds if they, because I know at one point if they go into student funds, it's supposed to go to the whole district. And that was, that was one of the first things we talked about on policy when I first joined the policy.
Yeah.
Was the signage on the, this is just an example, the signage on the football field and how that, how that gets allocated. And that was per policy that would have gone into the general, uh, general fund, I believe. Um, so I think that's something that the policy subcommittee should take up and review.
My understanding on how most of the boosters currently run is that the money that is raised through their fundraising directly impacts that one team, which I think is what drives the fundraising effort. You know, if they're fundraising for their warm-up suits or their backpacks or their pitching machine or whatever it is. So I don't think there's any boosters that wanna see it go into an overall fund unless there was a way to track.
And it shouldn't. Quite frankly, it shouldn't. They, they should be separate organizations, they should have 501(c)(3). They, they should be registered with the state of Massachusetts. They should be doing that if they're raising funds. Otherwise, they would be considered a parent, uh, I mean, as a parent organization.
That's just what, yeah, it's good.
Yeah, and then they're, so. I would, we definitely have to take a look at this to make sure that, number one, they're running correctly because if they're not using the funds correctly, or not that they're not using the funds correctly, but if they're not, if they shouldn't be having the funds and they're calling themselves something that they're not. Um, if they should have a separate bank account, they should be having a lot of stuff that's, that's separate. That way they're not, I take the BMMA for example, they're, they have everything that's separate. They can do a lot of things that are separate from, you know, from the school, as long as they still follow the policy that surrounds.
So I don't think there's any boosters that are associated with school accounts at this time.
There isn't, because there was.
And they shouldn't be.
And there shouldn't be, correct. Because that was one of the things, they were, and then when we discovered that it shouldn't be like that or there was...
What was the purpose of the email, though?
Just to let them know that, first of all, we're trying to motivate these groups to get their 501(c). And several of them are already in process of doing that. And that's why at the, at the end of the email, I did say, all of this can be, the exceptions could be made if you come before the school committee and get approval, right? If you, as a board, want to approve these parent organizations to advertise and use that space and things you can. But our policies, in the way I read it, we only can directly associate and work with booster clubs, right? And that's one of the things, and we promote that, we want that to happen. But you're not a booster club if you don't have a 501(c)(3). And go through the state requirements, you should be reporting every year, there's taxes you report, there's actually fiscal reviews that have to happen to those groups to ensure that the funds that are being collected are being used properly. And that's just a, it's a protection for the district. We don't wanna be, and I'm not, I'm not in any way saying any of this is happening, but if there are misappropriation of funds that do happen in these groups and we're associated with them and we're helping them to decide how to spend those funds and working with them, that does put a liability on the district. So we just need to be careful that everybody's doing what the policy is requiring and what the state is requiring them to do.
I don't think there's ever been, well, I shouldn't say ever. I don't think the boosters typically ask the district to weigh in on how their funds are being spent.
No, and we shouldn't, we really shouldn't, but if we collaborate and work together, they might, I would hope they would come to you and say that what does the team need? Not necessarily, what do we wanna give them? But maybe there's a need that the team has, which there shouldn't be, we should be financing most of it, right? But there might be something. Something that's useful to the team, right? I would hope there'd be some kind of collaboration.
From my experience, the, the booster or the parent-run organization confers with the coach to see what the team would like.
Which is good, yeah.
And my fear with trying to tell everyone that they need to have a 501(c)(3) status, and I understand that like, that is the designated status that makes them legit or whatnot. There's a fee associated with that. And our teams barely raise enough in their fundraising to get what they need. To ask these kids to fundraise for a paperwork fee, I have a hard time with. So that's, I, I think this needs to be a much bigger conversation.
Yeah, so we can definitely have this, we should definitely get this on the next policy meeting because to, to that point, though, also with, I, and I'm, again, I don't know everything about 501(c)(3), but I, from what I understand, and there's new policy that's coming through that eliminates games of chance with um, school organizations. Um, so raffles, anything like that. And then there's, if I read it correctly, I don't know if you guys read it, it said something about that any booster organization is maintaining within the law of those raffles. And that's, there's a lot of reporting to the lottery and all that kinda stuff, so. That's why you don't see uh, many boosters doing like bingo anymore, where, you know, back in the 80s and 90s it was bingo and, and a whole bunch of stuff like that, but you don't see them doing it anymore because there's so much reporting and it is super costly.
Yeah, bingo's a nightmare with the state. Like, that's why the towns don't...
That's why nobody does it, yeah, yeah, that's why nobody does it.
But are you saying we already have a policy in place that limits them from using our logo?
Well, the policy doesn't specifically say that, but the policy does say that that's who we would work with.
Okay.
So, again, this was just something that I began uh, early on when I came in discussing administration and how we should move forward with it and try to stay within that policy. But that's one of the reasons I put in that email, that you can come before the committee as an exception, as a parent organization request. And so it's not, they can't just show up and throw out a bunch of signs and start advertising. But if the school committee approves that for that organization to do that at the games, we can't. And they're not a booster, that's fine.
I mean...
So the thing is...
What about when they're selling merchandise that has our logo on it? As a fundraiser for them, I mean, that's a common thing.
You could approve that, too.
But isn't as a 501(c)(3), if I purchase, if I purchase something from a 501(c)(3) and that, that receipt that I receive, I can use that
As a donation.
As a donation. So if they don't have 501(c)(3) status and I'm under the assumption that it is a, which you should be under the assumption that, you know, an organization like that is, is a 501(c)(3), then that can cause, that can cause issue, too.
A 501(c) will all, um, it will also be tough, too, because the boosters change as the students move on, like the person running.
The organization stays, though.
But to establish one, you need an EIN number. And an EIN number is tied to your social security.
No, it's not.
No. No, it's tied to the organization.
You can request an organization.
EIN is the organization's EIN. EIN is the organization's social security number. The 501(c)(3) status is used, you can't have it unless you have an EIN.
And that gets passed down to officers of each
Correct.
Of each booster. So, when the students move on and you're electing new officers, president, vice president, treasurer, that treasurer is taking over the responsibility of the EIN, technically.
Taking, PTO is a 501(c)(3).
PTO's, yeah. BMMA has it.
BMMA, yep.
How do you get an EIN number without a social security number?
It's your organization.
The organization.
Your organization applies for it.
File for it, it takes about, it takes about five minutes.
Yeah. Then the annual filing will change the offices of the...
So what, what do you propose parent-run organizations do, though, that have one, possibly two parents that run it? You're not gonna establish a full board?
They need a board.
How do you have a board with one person?
One person could be the whole board.
You don't get a lot of parents that volunteer, I think, is what Carrie is saying, yes.
A hundred percent. You can have one person as the full board.
And I feel like this is gonna make a mountain.
Yes, for parents.
For parents. We have to find a way to make it easier and more accessible. I don't know what that way is, but this is, that sounds like people are gonna be, okay, we're not doing that. And then the kids don't get anything and the kid, you know...
We don't get a banquet.
So how do we...
And then there's no banquet, there's no jackets, there's no, no sparkles on the cheer uniforms, because that's how the money is raised. So it's...
I think this would be definitely useful for a policy.
Policy, yeah.
Policy meeting and, you know, maybe have it a little bit more in long form so we can get through it a little bit better.
It needs to be encouraged, not discouraged.
Correct, yeah, it needs to absolutely be...
So we're gonna encourage us to go to a policy subcommittee.
Like that.
And we will, I mentioned about violating open meeting law earlier, so we will not continue this. It's, it's not an agenda item, but it was a robust discussion. I mean, potential agenda item, which will come to us at the recommendation of a policy subcommittee, how about that?
Couldn't have said it better myself.
Thank you. Carrie, do you have anything else?
That was it for my school committee forum.
Anyone else have anything for school committee forum?
Yeah, so I just wanted to recognize um, Eagle Scout Kevin Burgess, who, was that yours? I'm sorry.
That's all right, Matt, go ahead. We'll give him double the accolades.
Yeah, so he did finish his uh, project, it is complete. I believe he did uh, email the district of that. He, I think he did a great job out there. Uh, he does have a few extra things that he has planned, but as scouts go, he can do that and he'll be talking to the district about that. That's what he informed me of, he has some, a few more ideas. Frankly, he has, he has a little bit extra money that he needs to...
He did well in his fundraising.
Did very well in his fundraising, which was covered by the 501(c)(3). Uh, and all appropriate uh, receipts were distributed. But um, congratulations to him. I will say, you know, personally, we, the Troop, uh, Troop One in Blackson did have two recent Eagle Scouts finish their projects. And uh, this is about a five-year, probably not a three, four-year hiatus of any Eagle Scouts. Uh, just some, some things that happened, so congratulations to both of them um, for their Eagle Scout projects, especially Kevin, so.
Matt, is Kevin especially young to be achieving?
He has flowned through. He is a very determined, very driven uh, young man who has um, excelled through uh, every rank since he's gotten into scouting. He is 13, 14 years old.
Oh, wow.
Typically in scouts, you know, the, the sweet spot's about 15.
Yeah.
Uh, we always say, you know, before they start getting into cars and, you know, all the other extracurriculars, um, we try to get them into Eagle, uh, 16 being the max, but they have until 18 to do it. Uh, so he is definitely ahead of schedule. Yeah, so, again, this still has to go to a board of review, they still, the, the scouting organization still has to review it, approve it, make sure that, you know, everything's been done to their specifications. that, you know, everything's been done to their specifications. But everything was done by, by scouts by hand. Nothing was done by power tools or anything like that per scouting rules. So if there was any power washing or anything like that, that was done by adults. But his job was to project manage and he did a great job.
That's awesome.
A lot of stone.
Very good. Any, anyone else?
I have one thing. The, our coach advisory committee, we have two people here on that.
The athletics advisory committee?
Athletic. I just want to get appointed to that. Is it closed? Is it? I would like to be on it.
Oh, oh, you wanna get, you wanna be added to the?
Yes.
I thought you wanted to be a coach.
No, no, no.
On the advisory committee?
Yes.
We'll find out for that for the next agenda? Is that good enough? We'll put it on the, if there's. Is there, I'll have to look into.
So there's some important interviews coming up for positions for this winter. And it's so important us, for us to be trying to get the, the right coach for our situations. it would've been nice to have been on the agenda for this one, but I wasn't aware that it needed to be, it could be more informal appointment.
I, so typically, Erin, you guys can correct, Jamie, typically when there's a reorganization, then we do the committees right after the, after an election for the year. Is that?
Was that one of them?
No, this is not one of our committees. This is a district school committee that has certain number of positions, I believe. What those numbers of positions are, I don't know.
But typically, we.
But then we would appoint them, yes.
Yes, yes. So that's typically done in June, after, April, May, somewhere after the, we reorganize.
Yeah, but that's not what this is.
What is this?
This was, we were revamping the athletic director position and Jason had, I think, asked.
It was, um, when we were having.
Their input.
Issues?
Yeah.
With athletics. And Tara and I expressed concerns, like this is going back prior to Darlene and everything.
So this is like an ad hoc committee?
And it became a new position for our athletic director. Like, they, they kind of worked with Jason to create the full-time life, student life athletic director position that Darlene holds. And they've kind of just stayed there and.
So because it was a new position.
Yeah.
He asked us to be on this advisory to almost walk through it because there were so many concerns with athletics.
Sure. So this is, you, Carrie and Tara, is this what you're on right now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is what you're looking to join.
We meet monthly with the athletic director to go over different athletic concerns and things that are coming up and whatnot.
So we have regular, we have like regular meetings. We do the interviews for every position.
But it wasn't a subcommittee of the school committee?
All right, now it's.
If that's what you, yeah, I think that's what you're thinking.
It's not a subcommittee, like.
No.
So, I mean, I think.
But it's not a formal.
I think why, there would be no reason Chuck couldn't say, I wanna be part, part of that. Because it isn't a formal, it's, I don't know. I would think he could say, I wanna be part of the interviews. I mean, maybe if Jess was here, we'd have better.
Just advisory, it's not, I'm not giving them any special powers or.
Right.
I don't think it's just advisory.
Kind of like liaisons more than is what I've taken it as. I mean, did you know you were gonna participate in coaching?
When we first started.
Is there, is there anybody else on it besides the athletic director?
When we first started, Mr. Ducharme was on it with us. He met with us monthly, too.
Yep.
To create the position or to work with Darlene?
We worked with the previous athletic director. On different things. And then when we went to the full-time director and Darlene came in, we just continued our monthly meetings with.
It's just monthly meetings and we, we add on other meetings. They're usually between 11:00 and 12:00 during the day and then the interview processes.
Yeah.
Is your monthly meetings on Zoom or in person?
Sometimes.
Sometimes they're on Zoom, sometimes one of us Zooms, one of us goes in, sometimes.
It's different each time.
I mean, it's a pub, I mean, it's a, as a school committee member, you could join those meetings. Between now and the next meeting, I, I don't even know if there's a mechanism to even officially put you on it. How did we put you?
It's more just.
Not an official.
I would say that Tara and I weren't necessarily meeting and bringing concerns up about athletics as school committee members. It was more as two parents who were active in athletics and Jason created an advisory to work with the athletic director.
Oh, because you wanna be that, on the advisory, created advisory. Talk to the superintendent. As parents, right? As, yeah, as parents, you kind of set it up, so. I would encourage you to reach out to the superintendent during the, during the week. Maybe we can get expedited. That'll be before October 9th is, you know, I don't think the committee has to make a decision on that.
Yeah, it's not like a school committee, subcommittee.
Darlene just said that she plans to have.
Do interviews.
Interviews before the end of this month.
Yeah.
That's why.
Before October 9th. It sounds like maybe there should be a request for interview committee for said positions if that, if that's.
So what was brought to my attention when I did try to follow, I did follow up with Jason, because I wasn't involved when this was initially put into place, that this committee does meet on a regular basis and it was determined the process at that time, and you can correct me both of them wrong, that the process at that time was that the members of this advisory committee when the year started were members of the interview committee, along with administration, with the AD, and at times Jessica was in there. So that's how it was established. It was an ongoing thing that when folks entered, yes, and a student also participates in that as well. So that was my understanding, that's what was described to me, that any, you know, if they have an open meeting or however they meet, but the committee for interview committee was created in the process with those members who were, you know, had been on it since the start of the year and went through the year, and it included the, again, all those other individuals who were part of it.
So I, I'm gonna request that we make that a future agenda item to formalize, because we should not have something called an advisory committee that doesn't have set. And it shouldn't just be school committee people, it should be school people, students, whatever, but, because we have other ones. We have health and recreation, we have other advisory committees. People from the school committee and the schools and whatever serve on those. So we need to look at those and, and make a comparable.